Down the Skyway. So if we could just get through the agenda and then give them some time so we have space in between this and the Finance Committee meeting that follows. For the record, our Legislative Aid, Michelle Andres here, Council members Hoey, Fahy, Anani, Love, Johnson, Doche, Flynn, O'Brien, and Farrell. We're all, and myself, we're all here. Okay, getting to the agenda on local laws. Held, they're held. Richard, there's nothing on F, is there?
Uh, no.
No, okay, so local laws are held. You need this, Judy? Okay, ordinance is introduced with forty-three, one, twelve, nineteen by Ms. Love regarding the sale of one forty-two Livingston Avenue. It's a vacant lot. Okay? That'll be an intro. And goes to Planning. Next, it's forty-four, one, twelve, nineteen. All right, it's Mr. O'Brien's on the Blood Plasma Centers. You care to say anything about that, Mike? Or?
Well, you also expect Chris to be submitting his own verdicts. Because I know he's going to be pretending he's the board major in November, the planning board. So I, you know, my thoughts, I take our place on the law this subject because. Court Counsel asked us to draw the last one.
Want to move that down some?
So it's, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be a counterpoint, I think, to some of the issues that it raises up in Chris's awareness.
Okay.
And they're both going to land.
They'll be referred to Planning, yeah, well. Okay, ordinance is held.
Is this by the committee or?
For Michael, for yours.
Both plan.
Yeah, the. Planning Committee.
You're talking about the one that came out of Committee Operations? Yeah, it's, um.
Oh, where is it?
It's number twenty-two. Thirty-two, one, zero, one, nineteen, that's the one that relates to marriage licenses and the waiver of the fee for active duty personnel, military personnel. That came out of the Operations Committee.
Positive?
No, Mike, it's not on here.
So that'll be a pass?
So that would be a pass. Uh, it's on the.
I'm thirty-two.
It's thirty-two. Yeah, no, it's there, thirty-two.
No, but his is not on there.
Which, the blood plasma one isn't, because that's not.
Oh, it's not.
And the other one that was on the agenda, thirty-four, which is number twenty-four, the vial statistics fees, there's going to be more discussion on that, so that's.
So it's still a hold?
Yeah.
Okay, the rest of the ordinance is upheld.
Well, pending, up here the Finance Committee, there's some Finance Committee on our side, we'll see how progress on that.
Okay. Yeah, you have the budget ordinance and stuff like that, so. Resolution is introduced. It's the first, seventy-six, one, twelve, nineteen R. That's our Water Authority, the Water Board, resolution. Joe Coffey's supposed to be here on Monday to speak to that. And depending on how members feel about it after the discussion, it could be a pass or not, so that's tentative for that one. Next resolution, seventy-seven, one, twelve, nineteen, is Mr. Anani's in support of the nurses securing a fair contract. If members are comfortable with that, that'll be a pass. All right. Next resolution is seventy-eight, one, twelve, nineteen R. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement, an intermunicipal agreement for stormwater. Mr. Coffey's also going to speak to that when he's here on Monday, so.
Who's monitoring?
Well, these two resolutions, they're not on the right committee?
Depending on the type, I mean, the one with the nurses?
No.
They, again, the resolutions and not only that, again, I did preface that by saying if members aren't comfortable with it, it'll, we can have a further discussion.
I'm just wondering normally what's, what's that standard operating sheet for these type of things?
It doesn't necessarily have to go. Depending on how the, your members feel about it.
Did, did he submit anything?
But the stormwater, it would normally go to Planning.
A conversation.
Yeah, I don't either.
So that's not a pass for Monday? It's not, but it can be sponsored by.
The Water Board, they would go to General Services. It, I mean, it depends on what his timing is in terms of, is it something that he needs passed for Monday or not?
And the discussion.
And then, you know, if it's, if it's heavy policy, you might want to put it in committee. If it's just kind of a team thing, it depends on what it is.
So pending discussion, it may go to DGS. Those two may go to DGS, okay? All right, I've got an M.C. Again, another water resolution. Does everyone have this? Please pass it on. The salary adjustment would further water.
Can you?
He's in his own world. He's going to come around, he just comes around.
For, for twenty-twenty? I didn't, I saw this late today, I didn't know.
So it's going to Finance?
Says outside of the.
Again, that would go to Finance, the Finance Committee would be sponsored by Finance. You okay with that, Judy?
Yeah.
I know you got a lot. And again, Mr. Coffey will be speaking to that also. Am I missing anything that you can think of?
Nope.
Anyone have anything else for me? Mr. Shea's here to speak to us about, give us an update on the Skyway. And I wanted to kind of try to get into that, so if members had questions to ask them, we could do that before the Finance Committee meeting. So if no one has anything. Go ahead.
I was talking to Cheryl Pandy and Judy and myself, we passed the sickle cell. And so what is next?
The whole house.
Right, but I'm just saying. Yeah, so what's next? I know you told me that it's supposed to go to the proper pre-group on the state level.
Yeah, do we have a copy?
I think I emailed it to you, but I can get your copy.
Do you recall whether or not that said specifically that we were going to be sending it on to people in the legislature? That wouldn't be the normal kind of thing, I don't know if we put that in there.
I'll check the wording.
Generally with resolutions, what you really should do, you should put something in there if you want to transmit it to someone whom it's going to be transmitted to. And then the clerk or whoever can do that.
Yeah, I just want to call.
So what happens if it's not in there?
Well, it still can be sent.
It's still going to be sent.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And I don't know what that, we did that a while back, so I don't know what, start to recall, because it wasn't, there was a few meetings, yeah, a while back.
There was a while back.
Yeah.
But she calls me on it once a week, so.
But it didn't anticipate any action on our part, other than passing a resolution in support of what she was advocating for. And then she could take it and use it, because I thought she had other resolutions.
It was more about increasing awareness, I think, right?
Yeah, and possible.
So if she was looking for state funding, you would want to make it passed on to our state representatives.
So with that, if we're, anyone else have anything?
I just wanted to mention, so Michelle created that calendar. The whole concept behind that is there's, we all have different events that we'll do or the things that happen.
The Google Calendar.
Right, so the Google Calendar, so there's a second one that went around. Yes, not this calendar. So for example, Joyce had her coat drive, I know Alfredo's done a couple of budget presentations, Ousso has cleanups. So just to kind of let us all know different things that we're doing in our wards to kind of, maybe we'd like to go to them or even to give us ideas for stuff that we could do in our own wards.
You just reminded me of something.
Someone was trying to steal your attention. Yeah, yeah, no, thanks.
On Monday, Jonathan Jones and Carol Williams, myself, are meeting with Colony Senior Services. You folks would be welcome to come in. What time? Ten a.m. It's at the Bellstone Center. Because Colony's willing to offer services to our seniors, questioning how to get them there.
Do you want me to add that into the calendar? So it's you at the, well, I got this information from you and add that in.
Is there any update on the hiring of the Legislative Attorney?
Oh, actually, yeah, thank you for that. There, we're also, are, the person that we mentioned in caucus before for the Legislative Council, they, it turns out they are away this week, they've had a long planned international trip. So they're going to be coming in, when, they're coming in the caucus, we, they're going to be coming in on the twenty-first. Our next caucus is officially the night before Thanksgiving. So we figured that we would have them come in on the twenty-first, so if anybody is available that would like to meet them, we would love for everyone to come in to meet them on that. It's a Wednesday, I'm sorry. Were we saying? It is a Thursday, sorry, there was nothing that, no. So at five-thirty, Thursday, the twenty-first. They'll come in and.
Jared's Position.
Jared's Position. So the gentleman that we talked about, what, five-thirty?
I'm saying, what's the title of Jared's Position?
Oh, it's the Legislative Council. The twenty-first, Thursday, November twenty-first, at five-thirty.
You send something out?
And when is he officially starting?
Well, haven't, he hasn't accepted.
So we have to, I mean, the next part of the process is for people to meet him and, and make sure council members are comfortable with him. And if you guys are as impressed with him as the interview committee is, then we can move forward with the next, at the next meeting from there, which is December second.
Is there any discussion about the salary?
We've had some internal discussions about it, we can certainly discuss further, but we've talked about doing, I think the budget number, we talked about doing what the budget number is, the corp counsel starts at sixty-eight. So, so that we don't lose someone again so quickly. And sixty-eight-five is in the budget, so.
Five, sixty-eight. I think it's sixty-eight.
Is it sixty-eight?
Yeah. But isn't it going to increase in general? Or are you guys going to keep it?
Well, the one percent, you mean? We'll just make sure we're clear on that before.
Yeah, I mean, it shouldn't, it shouldn't increase in general.
Just back up since hiring is by, I mean, the council has to approve the hiring. Are you going to have people, members here on the twenty-first to make a decision? Or if you don't have majority or very many, I mean, how are you?
So is that the time work for everyone?
We wouldn't be voting that night, we'd be voting. Yeah, so we would be voting.
The following Wednesday would be.
The following Wednesday is our caucus, but it's the night before Thanksgiving. Yeah, so it just didn't seem realistic, it seemed better to do it on Thursday, the twenty-first. There's no meetings that night, I'm sure other people have meetings, because we all have a million meetings. But doing it on Wednesday, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, we weren't sure how many of you guys would be able to attend, and it seemed like a better date.
I can attend on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving for caucus, but I am wondering if what we want to do is simply schedule a longer caucus the following Monday, to be realistic.
After Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
On the second? I mean, the big question is, that doesn't give us a lot, so if we vote him in on the second, that means that he can start in two weeks. And.
Paperwork feature.
Yeah, so there is some time carried with that. No, I know, but it doesn't really give a lot of time if people don't, I mean, it's entirely possible that questioning him, people might not be comfortable with him, and then we're kind of, to have the caucus right before we're voting for him.
I'm suggesting he be brought in for the interview and meet and greet on the second.
That's what it sounded like, okay.
No, no, it's not.
Yeah, I was like, I don't love that.
I'm actually raising a different issue. I'm fine with the twenty-first, I agree with that, but since Joyce said a lot of people are not going to be here for caucus.
You're talking about caucus.
On the Wednesday.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Oh, yeah. Yeah, does that sound?
To readjust knowledge, it doesn't, and, and have a longer caucus on that Monday for regular.
Yeah, so does that sound good to everybody? Would everybody like to cancel caucus the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and come in early? Thank you, Judy, that's.
I'm thinking maybe six.
Six. Yeah, let's plan it. Yeah, so on, on December second, we'll come in at six.
So the twenty-first meeting is canceled?
No, 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 twenty-seventh caucus is canceled.
The twenty, so the twenty-first at five-thirty.
Right.
Will come in, and how many members can make that meeting? Excellent, all right.
It shouldn't be long.
It shouldn't be long. And we were very impressed with him, he really, he very well put together, very smart, and I talked to all of his references, and they, I mean, obviously you're not going to, you would hope that you would pass along only excellent references, so it was no surprise that they were excellent, but the things that they said were that he worked with, really well with a lot of different people. He also was excellent at working independently, a lot of his, was very a motivated self-starter, great part of a team, so, and excellent writing and research skills. So the, the references actually were very helpful for the actual position, too.
Plus he lived in my neighborhood.
Plus he lives in Jersey. And he just came and spoke at a council meeting, kind of advocating for something in the neighborhood, which.
Working on increasing the coin in your power, right?
That's right.
All right, so I'm going to bring Mr. Shea up.
Thank you, Royal Lord, for your time.
Did you send an email about this?
Yes.
No, yes, no, yes. Did you send an email?
I sent, yeah.
About Brian's presentation, because I don't have no, I didn't prepare questions. Questions. It would have been cool to like, do your questions. I know, I know, I know, ask some specific questions, though.
Level, as a reminder, for the Skyway, our vision is to circle the business, need to rate it for our community work in our community. There'll be regional attraction, bringing people downtown, driving traffic to downtown businesses in the surrounding area, and it'll be a central component to the revitalization of this square, and was a central component to our way of DRI application. Previous council elections in support of this Skyway, just as a reminder, on two separate occasions, the council supported CFA funding applications for this project. And these two letters over here from Councilmember Love and Councilmember Kimbrough are letters of support for our DRI application, where once again, this was a central project, it was funded in the DRI process. Bigger picture, the project is also consistent with our opening twenty-three plan in the MAF Downtown Playbook, which stressed the importance of development along the waterfront and connections to the waterfront. So this, you know, this project is consistent with what the community has told us, you know, they want for the city, and also, you know, plans that the previous councils of the administration were involved in crafting. And, you know, what can transformative projects do? You know, one of the questions that people ask us is, you know, why this project? You know, when we were in the midst of the outreach of this project, Jeff, you know, for better development on the market, basically, et cetera, I'll reiterate, our interest in these assets, the assets being those buildings that are, you know, currently being renovated, revolves around our belief in downtown economic development. We believe that recent announcements, including the potential Skyway Park, make now the correct time to try and solve this important puzzle of poverty. That, you know, I think that's what we hear, it's, you know, what transformative ideas can do with the kind of investment they can drive, that's over eighty million dollars that's been happening in those buildings right now. No one would believe that was possible a few years ago, but we think that big things can happen. So we've identified funding sources and we've received funding sources, I'm going to outline them here. There's three point one million in the Department of Transportation that was announced in twenty eighteen. What that will do is that basically takes the ramp decommissions and makes it a pedestrian path to the waterfront. We received a five million dollar TAP award, which was announced in April of this year, and then a DRI awards, which were announced in July. We had another one point nine billion dollar project. This funding in total creates a true linear park, we're going to get it towards a stomach. Basically, this, in addition to the one point four million we're asking for, which is a required local match in order to execute on the TAP award, this project is one hundred percent made.
What is the TAP?
I'm going to get into that. What is that? It's a, it's a program that is a positive transportation improvement program. This is taken right from their program of, TAP helps communities deliver safe, transformative, innovative programs and projects. Some of the factors they consider when awarding, you know, funding to projects, they look for projects that improve mobility, accessibility, pedestrian, bicycle facilities, infrastructure projects, improving non-driver access to public transportation, enhance mobility, reduce vehicle emissions and traffic congestion, and revitalize local and regional economies. This is important because there's not, you know, a lot of people say, well, why can't you take that five million and put it into an Aireport Park, or why can't you put it into another project? The calls for a TAP award are pretty strict, they're looking for innovation, they're looking for projects in the Department of Transportation that basically take cars off the road. So if we were to take, you know, decommission a street somewhere else, or take another part of the highway, we might be able to put a project together. But that's one of the reasons we were so successful with our application for a TAP award for the Skyway. Those grants, they award between two hundred and fifty thousand and five million, we received a full five million dollar award for this project. So, you know, the state is very, very industrialist. So what will in total all of these, you know, funding sources paid for? Decommissioning and conversion, that structural steel repairs, somebody's work, kind of repairs, electricals, installation, irrigation, et cetera, all the kind of, you know, infrastructure that needs to happen to convert this ramp. Skyway highway modifications, kind of amenities, that's the lighting, plantings, art installations, garbage, recup, receptacles, all that kind of amenity stuff that make it a park. The gateway, that's going to be an attraction, so the gateway at the beginning of the ramp, and then the riverfront park, or get the end of the ramp, which is really going to transform that area on the waterfront. So where are we now? We've received approval of the final design report through a federal high rate administration, FHWA. They took, I think, the greater features of this project and asked a lot more questions than they typically would, probably because it's right outside of our building. We're currently motioning a maintenance and operations agreement with NYS DOT. This is going to do a number of things, but it will establish responsibility for root to maintenance, of plantings, wood repairs, painting repairs, painting, et cetera. And this will include a cost estimate for maintenance and operation, including costs associated with safety. Now, I know there's a lot of interest in the maintenance and operations agreement. Basically, how we see this is, you know, we feel that the city should be a suitable maintenance and operations agreement from our perspective, is the city be responsible for basically maintaining the park infrastructure. And we would expect the state maintain maintenance and operations of the rest of the massive infrastructure, the steel, the, you know, the big stuff that make it a ramp. Because we don't want to be taking on that liability. The form this is going to take is a lease, so, you know, they're still going to be, they're still going to own this infrastructure, and we just don't believe that the city should be in a position to be on that for that. If everything goes according to the timeline we have now, the contract for an opening in summer or fall, or fall of twenty twenty-one.
You're saying the maintenance and operation agreement will actually be a mass provision?
It's going to be like. A long term lease, yeah, of that, of that property. So before the council announced a body request for one point two five million, which represents a required local match, without the local match, the city cannot accept five million TAP award, it's built into the program. The administration is proposing language that requires council approval of the MNO agreement with DOT before borrowing from this match. I think that we, you know, we're concerned with the council, with all this operation that we consider. We don't want to be taking on a huge liability, we don't want to be servicing infrastructure that we don't have the expertise to service. So, you know, this is, you know, a show of good faith, and we want, you know, if, you know, the feedback that we received is that the council was very interested in seeing this agreement before approving anything. We understand that, so, you know, we're willing to make it a condition of borrowing this match. And this is, you know, this is, you know, with regard to the MNO agreement, we, it's under negotiation right now, but we've been very clear with the, with the governor's office, we've been very clear with DOT about our expectations of what the final agreement looks like. And, you know, they understand that it is going to require, you know, for you and the council, so. So thanks, so if you have any questions? Yeah?
Yeah, the Kip City Hudson Path Walkways.
Yes.
And my understanding is everything was funded by the State of New York, and there is like extra confusion on DOT roof structures and everything.
It's, yeah, Virgin Authority owns the Kip, yeah, we've looked into some of those. The projects are a little different. Again, we want to, you know, we would partner with, either the city would manage the programming here, or we partner with another entity, whether it be the bid, or, you know, parking authorities to manage the programming. And we want that control.
But, but can we take this, the fifteen, I can't remember, because I thought if the state maintains the whole thing.
Well, they're state parks, though, that's.
It is, yeah. They technically are state parks. Yeah, so it is a different sort of mechanism.
I think that's the last system.
Well, we, we don't have control over who has, you know, I mean, we want this benefit of the community, so like, I know, we want to be.
Well, because you have some certain factors, the community even has a state park.
Well, I, I, well, that's, that's true, but, you know, if we control the authority in there, we can, you know, we can have a fair say on that.
Yeah, but we, we, of course, a lot more, that does suck away from other products.
But it is, well, if we, if we cooperate, again, it depends on what the, on how we operate, right?
Was there ever an option for Albany for it to be a state park? Like, was that ever brought up as an option? Because I would say that we wouldn't have a say in that. If we did, I would love to see a lot of things as state parks.
We were, I mean, we were the, you know, we're looking for transformational ways to connect us to the Riverfront, consistent with the plans that I mentioned before, we're the drivers of this project. So that wasn't, you know, it wasn't like the state coming with it off the ground.
Right, so the state didn't, that was never on the table to have it as a state park.
Correct, yeah.
But nobody ever put it in that game.
Again, we do want to maintain some control.
We were on board.
Well, again, that's, the M O agreement is going to delay any of that cost and we're willing to put that through the council before we borrow it, so.
But we get that, what is four?
Well, we would, if the ordinance, maybe if we have, the research draft in language, we need to consider if this is something that you want to do. We would, yeah, we have to approve it, M O agreement before we were able per the bulk law to go out to bond it as part of it, that local match.
So do you have any estimates for what a cost will be, the annual cost of maintenance will be? Because I do have a issue with my name, that I, that, you know, we don't have the funds to make it safe. There are brambles and unsafe footing and tricky hazards, et cetera. We don't have the funds for that, how are we going to fund to do this? Do you know what the maintenance cost are for the I don't in New York City?
So again, you know, I don't want to, we understand the importance of neighborhood parks.
Seven million bucks.
And, you know, I think we're.
Six year old by mountain rock, you were saying. Seven million bucks, that is only three times the length.
And are they, are they going to, again, do they, do they manage the entire infrastructure? Do they service the entire infrastructure? That's what this M O agreement is going to delay. We don't intend to be on the hook for seven million dollars, we don't intend for, you know, the people.
And I say seven million bucks, it's actually more than that. And in terms of the entire infrastructure, I don't know the answer, but there's been 200 million dollars given to that particular project a lot, we've tried funding, et cetera. It, like, just sort of points to, among this, under, they have, you know, an annual year day, and that takes care of a minimal steel portion of leaving the beds, you know, maintaining the beds, getting these out of the beds, et cetera, planting new plants as needed. That's, that's a huge rescue with regard to, if this is supposed to have a focal point and draw, then you need to make sure that, in a sense, that it is better taken care of than some other neighborhood parks.
So with regard to parks, there's a reason that this budget makes a lot of operational changes, both within D G S and how the parks are maintained. You know, D G S is moving from, you know, kind of a linear way of operating, it was what, you know, the commissioner called a fad of the nineties, to a more paramilitary I C S N E N structure, which is really how you deliver services. We worked with our performance office to come up with a, with a new way of maintaining parks. We have assets of everything that are in parks. You know, I think you're going to, I think you should be happy with, with the outcome of the work that's gone into this budget, with the problem of operational changes. That means that, you know, we are seeking other funds, you know, to make the kinds of improvements you're talking about, specifically at your park and others throughout the city. There's going to be an announcement that we hear about soon to address some of the stuff you're talking about. You know, I, I scratch my head sometimes too, to be, how these parks were, were made to begin with without adjacent sidewalks in unsafe conditions. That was decisions that none of us made and none of us were part of, but we're cleaning it up as best we can. But this is, you know, this project, again, we started talking about it and Redbird decided to invest 80 million dollars in a slate of abandoned empty buildings in the heart of downtown. That's a transformational investment and that's, you know, I think that that's the difference. Is we need to focus on neighborhood, we need to focus on neighborhood of the parks, and we are. And we've had a lot of success and we're going to have more success. But we also have to keep our eye on the bigger picture, which is how do you solve these bigger problems? How do you drive this bigger investment?
This is something new to me as relates to the maintenance and operations agreement. Is it, am I correct that Corporation Council is going to draft language and we're going to be able to make amendments to that agreement?
So we would actually take your input, yeah. If there's something, if you looked at the, we're going to be providing, and this is a negotiation that we're having directly with the Department of Transportation, the chamber is involved now, we're going to be providing, you know, once we have something that we think we can present to you, once we reach that point, we present it to you. And if you saw something that you didn't like or that you thought would make it stronger for, you know, for the city, we absolutely will go back. We, you know, we're sending a message to the, to the state that this agreement has to withstand the scrutiny of, you know, the council, our county council, and, you know, they'll read the local papers.
And quick, quick question, can you go back to like page eight? And this is probably not.
And you're going to get a copy of that, right, Brian?
What was that?
Can we have a copy?
Oh, oh, yeah, absolutely. Which, which slide?
Eight.
Oh, eight, right here?
Okay, that building right there, I know it's not a.
That's a horrible view.
Okay, that building, is there possibly that something could happen to that building? Eminent domain, like, I mean, that is hideous.
Their campaign pledge was that that building will not do like that, right?
Was that their campaign pledge?
Well, Julie, you.
I was pretty involved in that campaign, I don't recall ever committing anything about that building.
So my question.
She said by then for her term, that's going to be dealt with.
So my question, Brian.
Someone called that.
And I.
Somebody did. It is hideous. Let's see, let's see it again?
You got it from New York City.
Oh, New York City, I got you.
You can't do anything about not trying to.
He was going to use.
That's one of the most protected rights by the constitution, you can't just take.
Well, you get eminent domain and property if it's going to benefit the city of Albany, isn't it? No, eminent domain, okay, that's fine. We just recently have a domain of property.
But you have to wait a period of time.
Question. This project, if it's to go through by 2021, do you think that will motivate the developer or the owner of that building to actually invest in it?
Well, that, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to speak for him, that, or it's, you know, that's a very difficult building, it's a very, very difficult building, right? Yeah, like, I don't know how you. If a pad windows, I think I have more. But I think, basically, I, look, even talking about this project, going through the public process, having the public input, they were really excited, we need like 70 plus people went to the public workshops. We can't get people, you know, we're lucky to get some people to show us the city off the road, right? So like, it drove investment, it already has driven investment. Like, and, and those are, those aren't Brian Shinn's words, they're Kevin Shinn's words, those are, those are Jeff Beal's words. You know, and he said that without us asking, like, he said that, we found out after the fact. So I think, you know, to your point, this type of thing can do transformative things. And, you know, the sky's the limit, like, hopefully we'll find something to do with that building. And you can add some dynamite, you know.
A lot of the.
Any, any other questions?
I just, I just want to say that one of my frustrations is I participated in a lot of conversations that took place, I don't know, it was eight, 10 years ago, and we said it's a lot of excitement to cut that out, turning 787 into a waterfront. And, you know, Syracuse, what is it, really have an object that's going out there, it really is their highway? That is much more massive than what, the barrier that this creates to the.
Oh, you can tell her.
Basically, for the three quarters of a mile on mine, that we got rid of, we do open that up. And I, part of, part of, you know, when you're renovating a house or doing anything, it's kind of like, well, you don't fix that until you figure out what the longer term plan is. And, and that's part of my comfort is spending 16 million dollars.
It's not 16 million dollars.
Well, that's what Sarah Regan said.
Now, those were, so, those were early estimates from Stan's, I've done, again, this, what I just, it's about nine, between 9.9 and 10.5 in the actual cushion, you know, for materials and such. But this is, again, the, the design has, has, you know, has gone through federal highway design review, they approved it. They're, you know, they, they've gone through all of our costs, they've gone through our funding sources. They were comfortable with providing us with approval. D O T engineers have done, you know, this work, you know, in other parks in the state, they've looked at the estimates, they've looked at the scope of the work. The, the number is nine point, you know, between, you know, 9.9 and maybe a little higher, that's the number, the 716. And again, we can, we can get into it, we can show you what that looks like if you'd like, but, yeah.
And, yeah, how much of that does the city have?
It, we're just at, it would be one point that, again, what we're asking the council to authorize the matching fund for the $5 million TAP awards, so that 1.25 million, the rest is paid for by the state.
So up to 9.9 or 10.9, the city would be going to use one point two, one point two five.
But, Brian, the total. That's 9.98 million dollars.
Whoa, what was that?
They had the three numbers.
They had up to 10.
Definitely had up to 9.98 million.
So these numbers here, 1.25, 1.9. I think on the DRI awards, I, I did leave off a small matching fund for the gateway, which was like 150,000. But again, there's a cushion built into this, so like, I, I can drive down into numbers with you, you know, offline if you'd like. But it is a nine point, you know, it's about a 10 million dollar project, yeah.
So would you want to know that for the, like, your capital plan here, it does show for the Skyway, 1.25 million in borrow, and then it says for the Gateway, Skyway, it's 950,000?
Which is, which is a DRI award, so.
It says D R I slash borrowing.
So there's eight, we were, 800,000 dollars is a DRI award, we did add 150,000 dollars percussion there.
So how do you get compensation for that 150,000?
We've asked the council to authorize that, yeah. So that's, that's, I did, what I mentioned was 150,000 dollars, I should have added that to order. But again, we, we had asked in the DRI application for a little more funding for the gateway than they, than they had provided us, which is why most of the public amenities projects, they funded 100%, this one they didn't. So we asked for, you know, just a little bit extra to cover that gateway.
And the bond ordinance that we have is for, let me think, 3.3 million dollars for combination of the Skyway, Gateway, and then you have a park.
Is it, if we add all the numbers together, well, I'll make sure that's accurate, yeah, if it's, they, they owe the 11?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's, I would say it's a perpetual problem for happening in terms of the port of money or, you know.
Well, I think.
And then we're going to bond the ordinance, bond the ordinance instead of a tire. So we have 26 million dollars for the bond ordinance.
If you just add, I think you just have to add the three numbers, okay, three separate, so there's a DRI award for the Skyway, and then there's this TAP award, you add the three up, that's how you get 3.3. We know two of the, you know, a, a big chunk of that is going to be reimbursed from the DRI. They, they tell us to get that money out of the door pretty quickly. But it's still a new kind of process for D O S to administer, so, you know, we're going to be an extra cost there. But it really, what we're on the hook for is that 1.25. And again, none of this goes forward unless we come up with an operations and maintenance agreement that we're comfortable with and that the council is comfortable with, if you want us to include that language, which again, we're happy to do. But, you know, I don't want to presuppose anything, we've been very clear with Department of Transportation, we've been very clear with the governor's office, this has to work for us. They know our, our fiscal situation, they know, you know, we turned around a primitive shift, and, you know, we don't want to jeopardize that. And, you know, we're making progress on some of the stuff that you all have always done in the neighborhoods, so we also want to reimburse that.
I just have a quick question. This project is going to cost, what, 10 million? How much will we get from federal, state, and other grants, all in total? What percentage?
I, you guys should calculate this, take 10. Yeah, what was the 90?
At 8.6.
8.6.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
10, yeah, minus.
1.25, yeah.
Oh, the history made, I'm sorry, but anyway, that's fine.
Brian, I'm just confused about, like, Julie brought up, you know, there is in the thing right here, it's, we're looking for a 3 million, 300,000 dollar bond. So, so are we going to, this is going to pay back that bond?
So we're asking to bond for the DRI awards, which are reimbursable as well. Like, so, and, and again, I heard on the last primary speaking, you know, there was a, I heard that, you know, a lot of concern about what we are asking tomorrow for, you know, and it is a big number, but that's because we're winning a lot of awards, it's a good thing. DRI is an additional 10 million dollars in our request tomorrow, that's reimbursable, we're going to get that money back.
So then we can walk the bond?
Yeah, 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 we're short term men, so it's, it's, you know, we're, we're taking on a lot and we have to execute a lot. And there's a lot of stake, it's a good thing, like, the stake will be that we can deal with. These are competitive grant holders that we're winning. You know, other cities would love to have this, you know, other areas would love to be going to the council, I need you to, I need you to bond for this 10 million for DRI.
Um, would you mind just talking a little bit about the funding process for DRI? Because that might be, I mean, is it something, so it's something that has to be reimbursed?
Yeah, it's reimbursed, so.
So we have to spend the money?
We have to spend the money in order to get it back, yeah. They, it's still a new process and what, we're round three, we went round three. So the, the, the cities that came before us around the capital region, unfortunately, they've had a hard time just executing on it because they, because of internal capacity. So there's some awards that they just, they haven't executed on. But what D O S tells us, and we meet with them, we meet with D O T, because they're going to map out this process, is that there's a lot of flexibility and the, the governor has instructed the Department of State to prioritize these reimbursements because they want these projects done. And they know, you know, small cities don't have a lot of bandwidth to, to crawl this money. So they're going to, you know, we can start sending receipts, they will get all these monthly shorter awards. Does that make sense to us reimbursing?
Brian, pardon me, I was with Jack last night, we were driving, and he said, which range is, I have no idea.
It comes down into, it comes down.
About six, seven, seven prime.
Yeah, right.
One with the palace. Goes up from the corner of your.
Auto conversation?
Yes.
Right, so it's like right next to the crack, and it comes out right by the.
Is it the one way going towards Rensselaer then? Is that the?
It comes down.
It goes down to Clinton Avenue?
Yes.
Tom, I could show you where it is.
I never drove it before, the first time I, the first time I went on it was when I was walking, I, I had never.
And it crosses over, it goes over 787? So, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And with regard to the bigger point about burying 787, that's not, you know, what America's always said is, get me a ramp first, I'll show you what I can do with it, and then, and then, you know, you'll hear, you know, you'll hear from us. We have, I think we have to show that we're serious about being able to execute on this kind of thing before they take us seriously on that type of massive project. And there's a lot more to consider, there's rail lines there, there's, there's a lot of other industrial activity. But this gives us access to the waterfront. And it does it in a way that we know it has an impact, it's proven to have an economic impact to be an economic driver already. But 787 is, you know, I bring it up all the time, I'm with the government people. And I, you know, there's, those conversations are ongoing, like, this isn't, these two aren't mutually exclusive at all. We can, we can have a linear park that drives economic growth and we can bury that thing. Or, you know. Boulevard, yeah, yeah.
Boulevard, yeah, but, yeah, I mean, it, it looked very viable.
But that is a, but that's a, you know, you're talking about, I don't know, pick a number, that's a big, big, big project. But that is a, but that's a, you know, you're talking about, I don't know, picking a red one, that's a big, big, big project, this in terms of the overall state budget.
And that's a possible outgrowth of this.
Exactly.
Really?
So, so, this is. I think that I said all the time, coming here from, from working like a reason, so, you know, so are you gonna just cut off that exit?
That exit, yeah.
I'm not gonna use the waterfront, because you got four lanes of traffic before you can see water.
For, well, there, the, the south.
On the right.
On the other end, there's gonna be, part of this project is, is creating that space on the other end. So there's gonna be.
So there's gonna be something going above those lanes?
I should show you some of, I should have put more red rings in here. On that exit?
Yeah.
It, it goes right to, it goes right to the waterfront, it goes right to the waterfront, and it's gonna connect, there's gonna be a park there at the end of it.
Am I gonna provide it?
I, you might, you know. Cause this is one lane, and it gets such little, little use.
Do you know where the barge restaurant was?
It's the Clinton Avenue exit, like, if you're, if you're down by the Corning Preserve, you can go, you can go straight through to the boat launch. The, the park and stuff is there, or you can take the Clinton Avenue exit. It's the Clinton Avenue exit.
It's.
It goes up and around and curves.
So this is, so this map is the one, instead of coming to Manzalia, you're going from.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you were talking, okay, I think I, you were talking.
Or you're confusing.
The one that you go from the Corning Preserve, and then you go.
And then you go up and around, yeah, yeah.
Question. I'm making that, like, you got GPS in it, and the rate actually goes under seventy percent. It's elevated to both the railroad tracks, but seven eighty seven crosses over to.
No, it does. Planes for.
Is it under, goes under at one point?
Under both lanes of it, yeah.
I mean, seven eighty seven goes.
Would it be impossible to maybe, before you send that out, just maybe show us where it is?
Yeah, there's maps and everything, yeah, I can show you, we have all of the resumes from the, from the public presentations that highlight where this is and context and other views, so. I should have put them in here, but I didn't.
So what's currently, how many years do you think? Is it gonna be like a ninety nine year or fifty?
I don't, yeah, I'm not ready to speak to that yet, you'll know soon, yeah. So does anyone have any questions about like what we're asking, why, like, again, it's, it's, it's the local match was required to provide as a result of, or, or the exit kind of tap award, which is, there's a big metal funds. That's, you know, openness, that's what we'll be asking, what, it's, it's completely paid for after, you know, doing the, the design and the engineering with DOT, with Antech and with Federal Highway. So this is, this is kind of, other than the maintenance and operations room, which is a big thing. This is sort of the.
So when will we see the maintenance and?
We're negotiating it now. They are, we have a very motivated Department of State, so we're hoping in the next couple of weeks, we have, that we have something that we can present. But again, passing, authorizing the ordinance, if they include this language, they do have to prove the maintenance and operations room, we can't borrow for this, I'm gonna take you that. So, you can, if you include this language, you can act on this, this bond ordinance, and still, you would still reserve, you know, your authority to review the maintenance and operations room. We can't borrow until the council approves, if, if that's, if that's the route you wanna take.
So is it fully, and, and again, I just wanna make sure, the one point two five million group?
Yeah.
Is that the, is everything?
That's reimbursable? No, that one point two five is the local. That's, that's the tap award, the DRI awards.
Plus five hundred fifty.
Yeah, yeah, plus about a hundred fifty.
One point four nine.
Yeah, if, if we, yeah, that's right, that's right.
Paying for it, Judy?
What?
What did you say?
Uh, what, it's one point four million.
Because?
Because in addition to the one point two five, for the gateway piece of this, that is part of the DRI, is, is a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar project is the gateway. And they are only giving us eight hundred thousand on that, according to what Brian has been saying. So we have to come up with another one point five, one point five plus one point.
The gateway is, is actually based on the definition, is actually, can be pedestrian infrastructure down like adjacent to the actual skyway, so like, although for all intents and purposes, we're considering it as part of this, it actually is a bigger sort of, like, people walk, you know, down there, there's not a, there's not a great sidewalk. So like, that's, the gateway includes that type of thing. That's base, adjacent to the sidewalk, or this kind of.
Just, let's have a quick question. Since the last bond was presented to us when we voted it down, can you just tell me three things, just really basic, what has changed with this project?
Yeah, we had, so we were gonna use that, that could have been reimbursable through, through other sources, through DRI, if we used it consistent with, with what those awards were for. Since you voted it down, we've, we, we have a design, it's been approved by, like I said, by the feds, and the design is something that the state is comfortable with as well. We've secured the rest of the funding. We didn't have the five million dollar tap award when we asked the council to borrow last time. We didn't have the DRI awards last time, and, you know, we didn't have a clear, we, there was a lack of clarity. We wanted to show we were serious about the project, we wanted to show the state we're serious, so we would have allocated these grants. We were able to do it without the bonds, so, you know, it all worked out. But that's, that's pretty much the difference, is we have a plan now, this is fully funded.
Here's the big difference. Last year's five year plan had an eight million dollar borrowing commitment this year for that project. Last year, they were asking for one point five, and at the same time, they were looking at, to complete this project, their projection was this year, we would also have to authorize eight million dollars. Now, I say this, I don't want people to get too much into me, I provide, I like to provide information, I don't want people to say, oh, Judy supported this, I'm thinking about it. But, but I do think that that was significant last year as far as looking at the entire project. It was, we were looking at a minimum of nine point five million dollars, and you guys were asking us to.
I think we should have, we were confident in that we were able to, to secure grants for this, and then this is, you know, we were successful with these rent products. There were a lot of other ones we were lined up for, ready to apply. I think we could have communicated that better. Any borrowing, we expect it to be reimbursed for. We're lucky with this tap award, it's the right spend, we don't have to, we don't have to ask the council to borrow like five million. All we have to provide for is the local match. So, you know, but I think that that's, that's the big change.
Thank you.
Councilman, is we have clarity now.
And Brian, can you talk, just talk a little bit again about how special it is to get, this is the, the big award that state gives out?
They don't give large reports for a tap award than five million dollars. Like I said, they start at two hundred and fifty thousand, they go up to five million. This is a very, very, this is a very competitive grant to apply for. The competition was if, like, you know, we spent a lot of time on the application, and, you know, they, they take it seriously, and this was, you know, this is, this project goes through an additional level of scrutiny that most of our other projects don't, and that federal highway is involved. And, you know, they make you all look, you know, nice in comparison.
We would take this, right? So, I, I, I just had, I, I've had to lay out a little bit of my continuing concern really far compared to borrowing. The debt policy, as far as I can tell, is similar to most other debt policies, if, if these salaries have been, and it's a commitment that they have. Do you understand, it's supposed to have, they have ten percent of their operating budget type of debt service. And even if you're doing this on a short term, two or three years, because we have other projects that are kind of like that, also, we can't completely dismiss the fact that these are kind of rolling short term kind of things that do result in having more debt service to pay. And we're looking at this with, with, because, because the administration, in every case, is asking us to borrow the full amount, or almost every case, is asking us to borrow the full amount. We are looking at next year, again, you know, unless you cut like six million dollars out of what was being asked to be borrowed, we're looking at extending our debt policy limits. But, if I can just say, I know that three, I think it's in three years, we're gonna have a big little payment, I don't know if I call it a little payment, for retirement, when you're paying back a loan, of another rate, we're paying back like two million dollars, we're gonna be asked five million in a few years. We have, we have issues with potential lawsuits. Most municipalities look to not be up against their debt limit because you need that additional flexibility. It is supposed to be crisis. The PFN, I think, very properly cited this in our project, it's, it's very properly said, you guys basically don't have a capital plan, you have a list of projects that you wanna borrow for, and that's what we get. And if you look at the multi-year planning documents, you know, from OIC, they talk about doing some pay as you go, or doing some borrowing, and, and, and some actual capital budgeting. And, so, that's where I, and, and I've been told that the state wants us to pay for a new courthouse, you know, our city courthouse is on site.
The office of.
No, what?
Well, C A does, yeah.
Yeah.
Look, I think, I hear you, and it's funny, when I called the comptroller's office last week, they were the ones that reminded me that, you know, we're improving the city's fiscal stress board, Brian, and we're doing that because we're doing all the right things. The reality is, a lot of these grants that we're going after, we're succeeding in getting, we have to borrow for other big grants, and, but they're, they're reimbursable. So I, I hope that the council just keeps that in mind, because we're gonna still, we're gonna be chasing money for all of you, for projects and all your awards. And I hope that when we keep, we're successful, you don't say, sorry, we can't borrow, because PFN, which also told us we should cut fire and cut police in charge of youth for programming, and they made a lot of, I think, kind of negative suggestions that we dismiss outright, in right for me.
I agree, I don't agree with everything they say. Kinda hard to disagree with some of what they're saying about our.
They also don't think we deserve twelve point five million in opportunity. They think that we deserve less per age, per capita than you would go. I could go on and on about.
I described that report as the state's excuse for not having to provide us with the twelve point five million dollars.
Well, the state at the time did, did say, these aren't our recommendations, this is a, you know, this is a private, public consultant, and I think we should treat it as that.
I saw that they're not willing to pay us back.
But I think, like, I, I hope, again, we have a lot of opportunity, we're gonna keep chasing grants. I hope that the, the council is willing to, to let us do this, this short term borrowing in order to execute on the grants that we can, we can do a lot of great things.
I do have one more question. Have you reached out to neighbor associations in the communities that would be affected by the increase in traffic? And what is, do you have their?
Yes, we did, we did, absolutely. They provided letters of support for the DRI application, where this was the premier project, once again. Their, their one concern like yours and like ours was the, was the, was the cost associated with, with maintenance and outbreak. And again, we're gonna be providing that documentation to the council afterward, as long as you agree to it, before we're off to ask for it for this. And, you know, we'll be able to provide a number to that. We had to commit to providing an estimated maintenance number in order to get Federal Highway capable of the design, so. We'll have a much better idea once we're, once we iron out an agreement that we can present to you.
If we do approve this budget, I'll mention the fibered correct on the slide. This project should be finished by twenty twenty one, correct? Alright, thanks.
It's aggressive, it is, but because this is a DRI project, you know, all of the DRI projects, which are, you're gonna have a break a couple of years. There's gonna be a lot, they wanna move quick on it, because they want, they want to accelerate the projects that they can, you know, act on quickly.
So let's adjourn, caucus, so we can get into the finance meeting. Motion to adjourn.